Jill, is city staff ready? Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law, to the United States of America, to the republic of which we stand, to our nation and her honor and to the citizens of this land.
Welcome to the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission for Tuesday, March 27, 2018. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Devon?
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Vice Chair Hope?
Here.
And Chair Rick Hernandez.
I am present.
Perfect, thank you.
So, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes from December 12, February 13, and March 13. Do we have any comments or questions about the minutes?
Yes, I do, through the chair. On the December 12 minutes, I noticed the comments, there was a summary of a comment from a member of the public, Jo Chamberlain, that mentioned working with the city on how to deal with water. It says how to deal compressively with water. I'm pretty sure she means comprehensively. With respect to the comments about the horse trail and the trails not addressing erosion, the clarity was that the horse trail is leaking sediment into the creek as opposed to eroding the creek, and the vertical trails are what need to be addressed, where erosion needs to be addressed. The trail, the trail planning doesn't address erosion, so that bullet is fine. The bullet with reference to the horse trail needs to address sedimentation. And I don't understand the comment about Johnson House needing strength accommodation for Johnson House. I think maybe it was, we want to be sure that we're maintaining the identity of the Johnson House. Other than that, these notes were fine with me.
Are there any other questions about, oh, go ahead Jill?
As soon as the chairs quit rolling around, could you please restate the comment about the erosion? I got the other two, but I didn't get the detail on that, I apologize.
Right, so I remember that because it was my comment.
I know.
And so, the distinction was, Piracidos Creek is a victim of sedimentation, so the water is coming down the horse trail and dropping sediment into the Piracidos Creek and what used to be Piracidos Lagoon. Then there are the trails that go from the neighborhoods to the coastal trail, what are often called perpendicular or vertical trails. And when those get compacted and widened, they begin to erode. And it's that kind of erosion that is not unusual for other trails, but that's an example. And so, the goal here is that in our park planning, we want our trails to be planned to avoid erosion. Thank you.
Brian, do you have other comments or questions? I see no other comments or questions, so...
Move to approve the minutes of December 12 with modifications.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye, okay.
Aye.
I abstain.
I abstain.
Okay, very good. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for February 13, 2018?
I would move to move the minutes of, what was that, February 18?
13.
February 13, 2018.
I was not at that meeting, so I'll be abstaining.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and can we get a, can we get a motion to approve the meeting for March 13?
Moved to, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All abstain.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good. These are approved, and we will close that item out. The next item on the agenda is the election of Chair and Vice Chair. So, do we have a willing volunteer?
I would move to nominate you for a continued term as Chair of the Planning Commission.
That's a lot of work, will you take a second? Will you do it?
If my fellow commissioners support me, then I'd be happy to do it.
I will be happy to support you.
Great. In my case, can I get a...
I'll second.
Can we get a vote then?
I move that Rick Hernandez continue as Planning Commissioner Chair for another period, whatever that period is, year, annually with the...
Second.
Till the next, till the next election, post the next election.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
I would like to, are we ready for the Vice Chair nomination?
Yes.
Could I continue the pattern? I'd like to see Brian if he's willing to continue as Vice Chair.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Do we need acceptance, by the way, by Brian?
I'll accept, thank you.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving right along. Congratulations, Vice Chairman.
You too.
So, now is the portion of the meeting where we open it up for public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda. So, I have one item on the agenda, which is from Karen Perry. So, anybody else who has a public comment for an item not on the agenda, you can fill out a green card later, and you can line up behind the mic if you choose to speak, so...
Excuse me, just a point of order. For the comfort of our audience, I wonder if we should take a moment to get some additional chairs, if there are any?
There's a row there, here.
So, there are plenty of chairs here. I know many people don't want to sit in the front of the classroom, but you're welcome to join us, and...
There's a row here, too, in this area.
So, if you do need a chair, please raise your hand. Ms. Perry?
Ma'am, is the green light on?
Okay, now the green light's on.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. As I said, I'm going to read because I get too emotional when I speak. My name is Karen Perry, and I live in Frenchman's Creek. My back fence butts right up against Highway 1, and my home is directly across from, across from the proposed Dunes Hotel and RV Park. I often walk my dogs through the beautiful eucalyptus grove and pathways surrounding the proposed site of construction. I marvel at the red-tailed hawks which nest and hunt from the majestic eucalyptus trees. I enjoy our early walks along the pathway where we spy many jackrabbits, jackrabbits, occasional snakes, and the most beautiful birds. In the evening, I can hear the coyotes barking and howling from the proposed site from my backyard. I wrote over the environmental report. I was shocked to find out that the destruction of this area was described as virtually inconsequential, as eucalyptus trees were classified as not endangered or indigenous to the area, and hawks and other animals that live, hunt, or travel through the proposed construction site are also not endangered. There was, however, some concern for the livelihood of the red-legged frog and the San Francisco garter snake because they made the coveted distinction of being on the endangered species list. While our health, safety, and peace of mind will be compromised by this build, but we didn't make the list. I mean, the human beings are a dime a dozen, certainly not bordering on extinction. Gridlock, construction noise, and the destruction of habitat doesn't endanger our lives, it just destroys our peace, our love of the beauty of this area. I don't care about the tax base and rainfall for Half Moon Bay. I speak for those who cannot speak, the animals, the trees, and I speak to support and preserve the unspoiled beauty of the acres of land. And I call upon all of those residents similarly inclined to fight this insult to our coastal city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. It looks like we have another person who'd like to speak, a separate item. Okay. There's no other public comment, I'm going to close public comment. You may make a public comment. Please state your name, and then fill out a green sheet afterward.
My name is Alan Hyrick, I'm a resident of Half Moon Bay. My first question is, has anyone approached the Peninsula Open Space Trust about acquiring the property that the lady was just speaking about? And if not, I'll move on to a second point, which was, I understand that it's a planned unit development, and that a part of it is supposed to be visitors serving. I question the types of visitors that this proposal is serving. It seems to be serving people who come to stay overnight. My impression is that the majority of our visitors come from over the hill, they're here for the day, and they want to go to things like restaurants, or retail, or movie theaters, or the same kinds of things that residents of the city would benefit from. So, that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you.
You want to talk on that? Through the chair, you have another speaker.
Please. This is, this is the time for public comment, and we have, we seem to have a large crowd, so we're welcoming it, thank you.
Yeah, my name's Donald Shadam, and I live in Half Moon Bay. And I'm like a lot of people, really surprised to hear about this. I heard last week about this proposed Hyatt Hotel, and I...
Sorry, sir, we're not opening up comment on this item yet. This is for items not on the agenda, so...
Okay.
We're going to have, if you could wait a few moments?
Okay, sure.
To talk about this, thank you. Okay, so, if you have comments about items not on the, and that's, by the way, is for a separate hotel project that's being discussed, so... If anybody, I'm not seeing any other public comments, I'm going to close the public comment. I'm going to, the first item on the agenda is 2782 Pullman Avenue. This is a continuance item, so we've already had a hearing on this, and we had some questions that were left to city staff, so I'm going to turn it over to you, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. As you mentioned, this is a project that every, the commission is familiar with from November of last year, is when it was previously heard by the Planning Commission. At that time, the Planning Commission was supportive of the, the overall design of the project, the, and the commission was comfortable with the findings for the variances and parking exception. We requested additional, additional information in regard to biological analysis that's taken place within the Pullman ditch area. The commission also asked for clarity on drainage and the possibility of flooding on the Pullman ditch. And then, along with that, staff did have the landscape plan reviewed by the project For starters, as far as the grading and drainage, a geotechnical report from 2805 Champs-les-Zé, the project next door to the subject property, was included in your packet, along with a hydrological report that was prepared for the Staloski project across the ditch from the subject property. Also, a grading and drainage plan was prepared and included in your packet that shows all this, the stormwater from the subject property flowing northward towards Washington Boulevard. Staff did conduct a little background research on the flooding that's occurred historically on the ditch, and what we found was, with the installation of the new concrete elbow back in 2008 by Caltrans, adjacent to the highway, that that, that particular piece of infrastructure slowed down the water flow that enters Pullman ditch. And in combination with the elbow and the decreased amount of volume that actually goes into the ditch from the recycling, the water recycling practices that are taking place at the, the greenhouses, the, the overall water flow has substantially decreased in the Pullman ditch. I actually had a chance to go out to the site during the heavy rains that we experienced last week, and it was pretty clear that the, the pinch point of the, the Pullman ditch occurs along the, the mouth of the culverts that exist along the ditch. And this picture is from that site inspection a couple of days ago. So, what, and we did talk to some, some other folks that were around during some of the flooding incidences, and it's pretty clear that it's, the cause, the root of the flooding was from debris that gets caught in the, the mouth of the culverts. So, we have added some additional condition, language to condition number A7 that asks for the homeowner to, if, you know, any debris is seen in the ditch, to maintain that. In regard to the biological analysis archive that was included in your staff report, we did prepare a separate memorandum that compiles and summarizes the biological reports that have taken place along the Pullman ditch over time. And one of particular note, I've included the map from the 2000, 2005 bio report that was done by H.T. Harvey, and it considered the drainage as a whole, and concluded that the habitat quality of the Pullman ditch is marginal for red-legged frogs, and no breeding habitat is present. But the report also explained that it is possible that, for California red-legged frog to inhabit the ditch as an uncommon dispersant. And all subsequent site-specific reports presented similar conclusions. Now, we did have the city's consulting biologist, Huffman Broadway Group, review the archive of the reports, and they agreed that the conclusions of the, the recent site-specific assessments also suggest, or, they, they agreed with the site-specific conclusions from the individual reports. They also suggested that at some point, it probably would be a good idea to, to update this comprehensive map from 2005. Huffman Broadway Group also agreed with the biological analysis that took place for this particular project, and that the mitigation measures were appropriate. We still included those into the draft mitigation, or initial study, and mitigated negative Now, as far as the, the landscape plan, the project biologist did recommend some minor changes to the landscape plan, and we had those changes made, and we included a revised copy of the landscape plan in your packet. Staff also took a closer look at the trees on the other side of the ditch from the subject property, and it turns out they are all Monterey cypress. There was a question that came up about whether or not they were Monterey pine. In conclusion, there is a unique circumstance that is applicable to the property that justifies the requested variances and parking, parking exception, i.e. the ditch flowing through half the property. And given the narrowness of the lot, the six findings can be made for the, the 10-foot reduction in the 30-foot buffer requirement from the center line of the ditch. And let's see, the conclusions and recommendations of the bio report are consistent with the conclusions made in the vicinity, and the mitigation measures recommended by the biologists have been integrated into the initial study and MND. The house is well-designed and in compliance with the single-family residential design guidelines. We did receive a, an email late this afternoon from a resident with a few concerns, and we did provide you a, each of you with a copy of that email. And I just, I'd like to touch upon some of the concerns that were brought up in this email. I mentioned this earlier, there is concern that the, the findings for the variances and parking exception weren't sufficiently justified in the staff report. But as mentioned earlier, there is a practical difficulty or necessary hardship tied to the land, which is the necessary thing in order for the Planning Commission to grant a variances or parking exception, i.e. the, the ditch flowing through the property. The second point, there was concern about the, you know, questioning whether, whether or not the center line of the Pullman ditch would be the appropriate place to, to measure the riparian buffer. And at an early phase in both this project and the project next door, 2805 Champs-les-Zé, we coordinated closely with the project biologist to, to verify, you know, what plants were on the site, and whether or not we had any riparian vegetation. And the conclusion was 100%, no, we don't, and that's why we measured the, the riparian buffer from the center line of the ditch as required by our code. Let's see, with that, a couple other things. For this, this particular hearing, we did renotice the newspaper, renotice the site, and renotice the neighbors, since the, the project was continued to a date uncertain. Staff is supportive of the project, and we recommend that the Planning Commission provide the applicant with an opportunity to speak, take public comment, evaluate any concerns brought up. I've included a recommended motion, and I would be happy to answer any questions if the Planning Commission has any, so...
Thank you, Scott. And for the public present, I'd like to remind everybody that we've already gone through fairly extensive design review on the project, and looked at the other aspects of the project. Are there any clarifying questions?
Through the chair, I did have a couple. So, I, first of all, I want to thank staff for the great environmental report summary for the other projects that have been done in that area, it was very helpful. And I also want to provide an ex parte communication. My understanding is that in addition to Huffman Broadway having commented on this, I, I understand secondhand that one of the noted California red-legged frog experts in the world, Mark Jennings, concurred with your conclusion that, as it currently exists, it's not California red-legged frog habitat. So, I want to be sure that's in the record because that certainly was relevant to me. I don't understand, in some of the reports, why there was a, some of the reports said there was a question about whether or not this was ESHA. And while there may be some question as to whether it's frog habitat, everybody's, you know, staff and the commission and the applicant all seem to recognize that it's ESHA by virtue of being an intermittent stream riparian area. Is that your understanding? And do you have an explanation for why some of the consultants considered it questionable as to whether it was ESHA or not?
Yeah, so, so when you read through our code, it's, it's pretty clear that, you know, the, the definition, you know, black and white riparian areas are considered environmentally sensitive habitat.
Right.
And, no, I, I don't have an explanation as to why it is noted in one or two of the reports that it's not considered environmentally sensitive habitat, because it is, riparian corridors are listed as sensitive habitat in our code.
I hope someone will share that with the consultant at some point in the future, just for best practices. Then, we, in the packet, we've received an updated version of the site plan, and it showed a couple of things that caught my eye. Maybe they were there before, and I just was glossing over it because I was so concerned about not having a comprehensive view of the area. One of them was the detention basin. It looked to me like, and I may have misread this, but it looked like the detention basin was in the 20-foot setback. It was, it was between the house and the creek. Did I read that correctly? And if so, was there an alternate possibility? You know, if the house is across the entire width of the parcel, you know, maybe we just can't do it, maybe it's not feasible, but it seems like we'd be doing more disturbance of that area than we would have to. And since we're trying to minimize our intrusion into the corridor, I wonder if that came up in design review?
You know, there, there was some discussion on the, on the placement of the, the detention basin, and it's something that could certainly be explored. Now, it is in our interpretation that typically drainage features as the, such as this are allowed in the buffer, but we could certainly explore relocating it.
So, I'll leave that, I realize we're not in discussion, these are clarifying questions. And then there was, it looked like the pavers for the parking, there were some pavers that were also in the area inside the, the setback away from the stream inside that, that area. Did I read that correctly?
Yes, that's correct, so...
Did staff consider whether it might be the lesser of evils to propose a parking exception and leave that area unperturbed, undisturbed? And if so, why did we go this way?
Yes, it did come up in conversation, and it also came up in conversation on 2805 Champs-les-Zé, the, the project to the, to the west of this. And ultimately, the commission landed on with that project that pavers were, permeable pavers were acceptable within the, the riparian buffer. Part of, part of the justification for that acceptance, I think, was the, the fact that we do have bridge abutments that are within the riparian buffer for the Pullman ditch.
Okay, and then in conditions of approval, on condition seven, that's the condition that says that the, the owner of the parcel is going to clean the drainage. And I wonder if we can get clarity, because of course, if there's riparian vegetation, if we plant, you know, arroyo willow or some other species in that area, you know, I'm hoping that staff, you know, I'm hoping that staff's intention is that if somebody chucks a water heater down there, that it gets pulled out. But if we get riparian vegetation in that area, I would hate for the erosion associated with, you know, we, those kind of plants prevent erosion, which is a real hazard at this parcel. And I'm hoping that we're not requiring them to clean out vegetation that can hold the soil. Can you clarify that for us, please?
Yes, the, the intent was, you know, if, if there was some, something large that blocked the, the water flow from entering the, the mouth of the culverts, and that if there's anything we could do to, you know, decrease the chances of flooding occurring by removing, you know, garbage or anything else that would, you know, block the, you know, the mouth of the culverts, then that, that may, you know, provide a benefit to the entire neighborhood. So, for example, when I was out there the other day, let's see, hold on. There, there was some, you know, a plastic bag there, you know, that, that type of stuff. If the Planning Commission is not comfortable with the language that's within that condition of approval, we would be happy to make it, make some changes to that.
Okay, thank you very much for taking my questions. Thank you.
Brian?
John, or Les?
Just a couple of questions. I was looking at the items that were included in the requirements. One was a fire hydrant. Tell me, I don't think I've seen that before, but it could be, I've missed it. Is that typical requirement for the homeowner to put in the fire hydrant, or is that part of the water district? That's an item that just...
It is a requirement for the fire district, for the applicant to, to install a fire hydrant if there isn't one within a certain distance of, of the new home.
So, the question is, are other homes in that area also deficient because there isn't one, or is this singled out on, on this property?
It's unclear at this point, so...
Okay, and there's also something about sidewalks, and kind of that's, there weren't many sidewalks in that area, so could you amplify on whether there will be sidewalks for the whole area, or just for this site?
Yes, the direction that we've... Yes, the direction that we've been given from Public Works is that what would be required is similar to what was constructed at 2805 Champs-Élysées. So a, a rolled curb and, you know, not, not a, a typical curb that you would see, but the valley gutter, so, as well as sidewalk on the front edge.
Thank you.
Not seeing any other comments for, or questions from my commissioners. I'm going to open up this item for public comment. I don't have any comment cards on this item. If anybody wishes to speak on the project on 2782 Pullman Avenue, this is your big chance. Not seeing any takers, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the planning commission for discussion. Does the applicant want to make any comments?
Honorable Chair, planning commissioners. I just want to comment on how working with the city planners has been actually an education. They were very thorough in their reports and I just want to commend them for the job well done. I learned a lot about the biological issues, you know. I learned what it's all about, the Pullman ditch. So I'm very aware of the conditions and I'm willing to live with the proposed recommendations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And now I'll bring it back to the planning commission for discussion. John?
I just want to compliment the staff. When the commission asked you to bring the detail that's been in the past about all these biological reports, it's a lot of it and, and very thorough. And, and I really like the way you organized the flow chart of the different time periods of the different reports. Very helpful, thank you. I'd also like to compliment the owner. Charlie Kissick is a great civil engineer and did a good job with your site planning and the drainage. And he's done a lot of work on the coast side and it's a good choice of civil engineers.
Les?
Through the chair.
Please.
So there are a couple of items that I wanted to mention just to fine tune this. I, I will defer, if the majority thinks that's the right place for a detention basin, maybe there are good reasons and, you know, we haven't spent much time looking at, at that, I will respect that position. I, I do think as a person who has had, has focused on the issues of erosion for some time, I do worry about the potential of water moving down this drainage to cause erosion. It might be subsidence, it might be a bank loss, but the less we disturb that, that edge of the parcel, the higher quality the experience for the developer and the homeowner to whom the property is sold will be. So I'd certainly encourage us to explore whether there's another location for that. And then with respect to the parking site, that, the pavers that are inside that 20-foot area are going to accelerate the, you know, they're not going to absorb water. They're, they're not going to run off as fast as an impermeable surface, but they won't hold water the way vegetation absorbs water. And if I had to choose between increasing the disturbance of the setback and granting a, a parking exception so that they don't have to have that parking space in that area, I would certainly prefer the findings for the parking exception. Then finally, I would like to clarify condition seven so that it's clear that what's being proposed is that we remove trash rather than vegetation, with the exception of invasive exotics like Cape ivy, things like that, that could, that could cause a problem. Those are my, those are my suggestions. Thank you.
I think it's, it's an interesting point. I think my recommendation would be to, to defer to city staff on the location of the detention basin and work with the owner on that. I think that that's, you know, it's, it's worth considering, but I don't think we need to decide it here. It's more of a technical decision, civil engineering, planning, like deep site development.
I agree on that.
On the drainage, conditions of, condition number seven, I, I think the city staff has indicated the intention and I think your comments are consistent with the intention. So unless anybody has objections, I'd recommend we make the change as, as discussed. On the parking side, I mean, so there's two things for consideration. One, does the commission agree with that? And then two, does the applicant want us to push forward with something like that? So the first question I would ask, I'd ask the applicant, if we were to grant you a variance so that you could remove the parking, is, is that something you would want us to pursue? Or, you know, would you look at using maybe a grass parking or something like that? So.
So I'm not really clear what that really means. Maybe you can explain it for me. If you were to exclude the variance for parking, that means it would be approved without need for a variance?
Allow me to. So you've opened the public hearing, right?
I'm actually, I'm opening this up for your public comment, so yes.
Okay. So what I was suggesting was that currently you have, as I read your plan, there's a space of pavers that encroach into a setback that we would not normally allow development in. And the reason that that's there is because we don't want to unnecessarily violate the parking ordinance. That's my sense of why it's there. But my concern is that if I had to choose between creating another risk of sheet flow on the parcel and a loss of vegetative cover on the parcel and losing a parking space, I'd rather see an exception for the parking space and let you keep the natural vegetation. The idea is to, you know, we, our first charge under the local coastal program is to protect coastal resources. And I consider that that trumps our objective of allowing an exception for parking here. So I'd rather exclude the parking.
Okay. After looking at the site plan, so we're talking about the southerly section.
Yes, sir.
Past the garage. Yeah, I'm okay if you want to eliminate that and leave it as a green area.
Thank you.
So I'm going to direct back to the commission. Are we in agreement on this or are there, there's always, neighbors often have the concern around removing parking and having more street parking. So it's worth bringing that point up. Brian, do you have any comments on this?
In, in general, I, I agree with Jimmy, but I think you raise a good point. And so I'm hesitant to, without additional information, really knowing what the parking situation is on the street there, yeah, I'm not sure right now.
Les?
And personally, I agree, but if you have more than one car and the question is, are you going to park it in that area anyway? And if you park it in that area anyway...
That would be catastrophic.
So, you know, it's kind of six to one, half to the other. Question is, can we provide enough mitigation so that if there is parking there, it has the limited impact on the buffer area? That's, I guess, the question I want to raise.
Well, I've seen parking combinations where you use a combination of pavers with, like soil or grass and bioswale type parking situation. Maybe that's what we should propose as a recommended change because I think that would address your concern of reducing the sheeting.
I'm worried about the sheet flow and the accelerated absorption. You know, sometimes what you get is, there's a phenomena in erosion. In addition to sheet flow and subsidence, there's something called tunneling where the, the, the soil actually forms a little tunnel and it drains out really fast. And this is the kind of place where that could happen. So I'm just trying to be one step ahead of that issue. But you know, the issue's on the table. I respect the judgment of the commission and I, and I'll go for that if you want to.
Take my recommend, yes, please.
We just want to note a couple of things. The grading and drainage plan that you have indicates the drainage off of those pavers to be to the north. That is the intention, away from the channel. That said, we could imagine a grass creek kind of treatment. However, my concern is, this has been reviewed by engineers, that other concept has not and it, it may be harder to actually control the direction of the drainage using a grass creek solution. So I'm, I, I would suggest, I'm sticking with what you have, but let us research the other one if you're still interested in it, if you're willing to do that and be it to an engineer's discretion.
I, I think we would defer to city staff on this one, so we'd give you the leeway to make the decision as what's best.
Yeah, I agree. If someone is anxious enough, it's in the record and they can be concerned.
John has a comment.
So I looked again at the site plan and the drainage, all, all does go north on all those pavers. And I think practically speaking, the pavers that go in there that, that allow water to go through and the rest of the water's going to drain north is going to be a lot better for the creek habitat than somebody with their car driving on whatever landscaping gets put in there instead.
I, I agree. And, and ultimately, you know, that, the, the, the best opportunity I think we have in that area to address that drainage is probably to reroute the water to an entirely different location, you know? But that's another story. With that in mind, I, if you're, if there are no other comments, I move that we approve this resolution with the clarification on condition seven, as we discussed during the hearing. I think staff is clear on the, the motion.
And also adding the discretion around the location of the detention basin?
Correct.
And leeway with city staff to explore other alternatives for parking with the applicant.
Thank you.
All in favor?
I would second that.
Can I get a voice vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, the motion passes. Congratulations. Next item is, okay, one moment, please.
One, a few minutes.
So we're going to take a two-minute recess here. If anybody would like to use the restroom or anything, that's great. We're going to try to rearrange the seating a little bit so that people can see a little more easily. And then we have some other, some audio visual changes that city staff are going to work on. So give us a couple of minutes here and we'll reconvene.
No more chairs back there. Are we totally out of chairs?
Yeah, get him to, there's a hole into that.
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry.
Well, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Twice as one day.
Oh, I turned this little puzzle.
Okay, well, anyway, I think it's a really great, I think, it's a really good story, but I did want you to be aware, and we're making a decision practice. Yeah, that item, that's a P U V. I'll, I'll give you my email address. You're welcome.
Right. The appearance on it, totally, I like it.
All right, guys, let's try to get restarted here. Second item on the agenda is a project proposed on South Main Street and Highway One, PDP 72, 2013, Hyatt Place Hotel Project. This is for a notice of preparation scoping session for the environmental impact report. Jill, do you want to explain what we're doing here?
I would be happy to and welcome. We're happy to see such great turnout tonight. Before jumping into that, I just wanted to do a quick poll because it's important for our process and obviously something worked for getting the word out. Could you please raise your hand if this was from the Nextdoor posting? Okay. How about the City of Half Moon Bay eNews? A little bit of that. The little tiny sign on the site? Not so much. Okay. So we have to post sites. It's hard to post a large site like that. So Nextdoor seems to continue to be working pretty well. Anyone encouraged to come because a friend or neighbor told you about it? Good. And so you can also be that friend or neighbor to tell your friend or neighbor to come. So anyway, that's just, just to get going. The purpose of this item is to get input from community members as well as the planning commission on what to study in the environmental impact report about the proposed project. This is not a decision-making meeting. This is early in the process. So this is called the notice of preparation. This is, we're getting ready to prepare this environmental impact report. The notice of preparation is sent to commenting agencies and a scoping session is usually held during the 30-day while those agencies prepare comments to give to the city. What has happened in the past in many cities, including Half Moon Bay, is these scoping sessions are usually held, well, they don't have to be before your planning commission. This is a choice that we, as staff has made, um, this is my practice, to, to always have these sessions before a planning commission so that the commission will hear the comments and concerns that you have about a proposed project as early as possible in the project and they can also help guide what is studied in the environmental impact report. It will also help them when they review the environmental impact report months from now because they have been informed...
So I'm going to give just a brief introduction of the project and then talk about the environmental review process that's ahead. And then I'll hand it over to the project applicant to give a more detailed presentation about the project, and we'll then hand it back to the planning commission. So the project site in question is located sort of on the southern part of the city where Highway One and Main Street converge. You can see the highlighted project site is undeveloped at current. There is a Ford dealership to the north, agricultural land here to the west, the fire station and a local theater on the east, and some residential land uses here. The project would propose a three-story hotel. There is under consideration a one-building variant and two-building variant, which I'll talk about. And the project would build up to one hundred and forty-one rooms and one hundred and ninety-five parking spaces, some of which would be for public access, and nearly three thousand square feet of conference space. The project would have green features such as a bicycle and pedestrian path, solar panels, and electric vehicle charging stations. So looking at the design plan for the one-building variant, you can see that there would be one long continuous U-shaped building opening up to Highway One with parking along the east and north side of the project site and a bicycle pedestrian path going along the west side. The elevations of this building would be around thirty-six feet tall maximum with a bit of an instep in the middle of the building to allow for less of a massive aesthetic. The two-building variant, much the same as the one-building variant, would have parking along the north and east sides, the bicycle path along the west side. And the two buildings would be placed perpendicular to each other with a bit of a connection. You can see here, they would have a maximum height of about thirty-six feet as well with that connection between the two buildings looking like that. So the purpose of the environmental review, why we're here tonight, as Jill mentioned, is this is a scoping session, and we're interested in hearing from the planning commission and any agencies in the community at an early stage in this process to identify any key issues that we should be addressing in the environmental impact report. And the environmental impact report itself, the purpose of the document, is to analyze and disclose environmental effects so that they can potentially be prevented, minimized, or mitigated. And the document and the process is meant to enhance community and agency participation, and I'll talk about the opportunities for that type of engagement as well. And ultimately, this document is meant to be a tool to equip decision-makers with the information that they need in order to make decisions about the project. So the process, when formalized, looks like this. The first step is to initiate the environmental process. And as Jill mentioned, there was a notice of preparation that was circulated, that was sent out on March twenty-second, and that starts a thirty-day scoping period. And we are now in that scoping period, and it ends on April twentieth. And during the scoping period, we really encourage and welcome and would love to hear comments about what the scope of the EIR should be and any key environmental issues that you feel should be covered. After that scoping period, which ends on April twentieth, the draft environmental impact report will be prepared, and once it's complete, it will be circulated again for public review and comment. That will be a forty-five-day review period where we encourage people to comment on the adequacy and completeness of the analysis and the EIR. There'll also be a public hearing at that point to hear comments. After that forty-five-day review period, a final EIR will be prepared responding to comments received during that period. And that EIR that has responded to the comments will be put forth in front of the city for the city to either certify or not, and for the city to use in its decision about whether they approve the project or not. So in order to understand what's on the site right now to design the project in a way to consider potential environmental constraints, the city has contracted a biologist to go onsite and do some surveys and to review previous environmental studies of the biological conditions onsite. And it was identified that those wetlands along the west side of the project site here, and this report was circulated in late two thousand and seventeen for comment and review. So understanding that, we've identified some potential key issues that we think might be, that will be addressed in the EIR, and all of these issues will be addressed in the EIR. And we're welcoming your comments here tonight and throughout the scoping period on what issues you think will be super important to be addressed in the EIR. In addition to the one-variant and two-variant hotel, other alternatives will be analyzed, including a no-project, where no immediate development would be built on the site, an existing zoning alternative where the current land use would be allowed, so there would be general commercial built on the site, a revised or reduced project alternative where a revised or smaller hotel with a one-hundred-foot buffer around the identified wetlands would be built, and an alternate land use alternative where residential or mixed-use development would be built onsite. So with the process understood, moving forward, this is our rough schedule. We're here tonight at the scoping meeting, March twenty-seventh, and the scoping period goes until April twentieth. So again, we encourage you to submit comments about the scope of the EIR up until April twentieth. Then the draft EIR will be prepared, taking into consideration comments, and will be circulated in early fall. We'll respond to any comments made on the draft EIR in the final EIR, and there will be a hearing before the city to either certify or not the final EIR. So since we're here tonight to hear your comments, I know many of you have submitted speaker cards. There's also comment sheets available at the back table if you'd like to submit a written comment. Or if you'd like to submit comments after tonight, we welcome that as well, and you can do so by mail to the address here or by email. And again, comments should be received by April twentieth, end of the five P M. And now I'll turn it over to the project applicant to give a more detailed presentation of the project, and we'll hand it back to the planning commission. Thank you all again for your time.
Thank you. This is the public presentation. The presentation. Good evening. I kind of wanted to give a brief review since we first started this project. It was back on October twenty-fifth of sixteen was the first time we had come in front of planning commission. And we, at the time, it was a preliminary design that just met the standards as far as setbacks, heights, and so forth. Wasn't necessarily the best-looking design, and we got a lot of feedback from the public and also from planning commission. So, but that was our starting point. And so since then, we've, as months passed by, we worked on the design, and then the EIR process kicked in. It wasn't originally going to be an EIR, but it was something that the city had suggested we do, so we said, that's fine, no problem.
Maybe you need to lean in a little.
Oh, okay. So anyway, at that point, the EIR was completed, or not, I shouldn't say completed, was started, and then they went ahead and did the biological work onsite. Following that work, we were able to find out that there was some wetlands, and it basically is in the drainage area of, along the highway, which is the Caltrans right-of-way. Okay, thank you. And at that point, we said, well, we need to do some redesign right off the get-go. So went back and worked on that, had a meeting with Jill, discussed it. I knew that now that there is some wetlands, it's something that brings us into the Coastal Commission's jurisdiction and their setback requirements and so forth. So in talking to Jill, she was able for us to set up a meeting and to go talk to the Coastal Commission. And in that meeting, I had, we had made modifications to the design, and one of the things we changed, can I change that or? Okay, so this plan is the original design. And it, we'll go back and forth on this, but I'll show you. So we have a walking path along the west side, which would be between the hotel and the Caltrans right-of-way. Lighter green section is about twenty-five foot wide.
Just, if, one of you has a laser pointer.
There we go. That section right there is the twenty-five-foot Caltrans right-of-way, and the dark edge is our property line. So we had a walking, the thing just died. There it goes. Oh, it's history. It ran out of power. Anyway, we went ahead, see if this is going to change. There we go. We modified the plan, and you can see the dark blue, that represents the wetland areas. And what we went and showed to the Coastal Commission was the fact that I took the, I know the city wants to have an east parallel trail for the bike path. We've already got one you can see on the west side. And so my idea was, why don't we go ahead and put that class-one bike path on our site and completely go around all of the wetlands to preserve it a hundred percent? And that's what we, you know, show here. So it leads clear from the future light that will be at Highway One and Main Street, clear up in two front of James Ford. We're also going to improve that to extend that bike path clear up to Seymour Street. The goal there was to preserve the wetlands one hundred percent. The path itself, the bike path, is within the hundred-foot buffer zone, but my understanding is that is allowed to do, and it's for pedestrians or bicyclists to use. So we do not meet the one-hundred-foot setback with the design, but we are, we're a hundred percent out of fifty-foot, parts of it are seventy-five-foot, and then other parts are a hundred-foot or more. So that was our goal on that, and there are other items. As far as the Coastal Act, it requires public access to be protected, provided, and maximized for all. And with this plan, we're trying to provide those items. Some of the other things that we would like to do is provide some parking onsite that would be for visitors' serving purposes. This would allow people to come, park their car, there'll be E V stations. Down at the south end, we have the gateway. We've expanded that. There was a twenty-seven-hundred-square-foot building originally proposed. We've eliminated that. The only thing down there now is a kiosk and also a bike stop. How that bike stop gets used, I can't say at this point. The bike committee might be interested and do some kind of rental thing, but we haven't got into that. But we did expand that area, so there's a larger landscape area now. As far as the feature, that's that half-moon sculpture, that's up to the city if they'd like to modify that. So in this new design, this is one of the two designs, we've reduced the hardscape areas and increased, this one works? Okay, so we've tried to increase the landscaping. So before we had, it's required to have a twenty percent open space area, and we can exceed that because now that the bike path is on here and runs clear up to this area, this area here before we were utilizing for the hotel, now we're just going to utilize it for landscaping, and also bioswells would be on this side of the path. And then on this side, the actual wetland areas in here and here could literally be expanded. I don't know enough about that stuff, but if that's something that Coastal Commission's interested in or the city, it's something we can talk about. As I said, we're going to do E V stations that'll be utilized. We're also going to run conduit for the future. We don't know what's going to bring, but maybe all cars will be electric one day, so we want to plan for that. There'll be park benches that'll be, park benches will be all along this path, and also there'll be signage for people talking about the bird life and the plants and so forth, is the same they have on the other side of the highway out in the open space areas. So another big item is trying to provide lower-cost visitors' serving accommodations. That's something that's very important to the Coastal Commission under the Coastal Act. We are in discussion with Hyatt on how to set something up like that in which we're able to provide rooms at a substantial discount for anybody who's, the Coastal Commission, you cannot sit there and say it's only for certain people, but we want to open it up in an opportunity at which we can try to create something that people through reservation system could try to lock up some rooms in advance so they could plan a vacation or something along those lines. I can't get into more details on that till I get some clarity on how we'll set that up, but I know that that's something that the Coastal Commission would probably be interested. I've gone online and read a lot of detail on workshops and so forth of what they're trying to do. A lot of times it's done in luthies, or they try to do it through hostels and so forth, but we'd like to try to provide something within the hotel itself to meet those needs. As far as the two designs, I don't know what depth you want to get on that tonight. We literally drew it two ways based on comments. This particular one has an area here that's over the swimming pool and fitness, and so that's only one level. And, you know, it's thirteen and a half, fourteen feet in the air, and that would provide the opportunity to use this area for wedding ceremony or whatever you would like to utilize it as. But it still gives pretty good separation, as you can see in the other renderings. Let's see if I can get this one. So you can, you can see there's some separation there in the middle. It's approximately fifty feet in this area here. The other design is a two-building design, and this area here would be the swimming pool. So again, it has good separation. These designs I've been working on with Hyatt, two of their senior architects, and right now they're very conceptual. We can still make a lot of changes to the aesthetics, but it's just kind of more of a concept to see. I'm trying to find out, in your opinion, if you'd like to see a two-building design or the one longer building. Even in the one longer building, going back to that, you can compare that to the original, which has the conference center at the south end. So we eliminated this whole section of the hotel and compacted everything into this area. So that kind of gives you an idea of the direction we've taken this, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
So I'm going to open it up for clarifying questions for the planning commission. I do want to address two points. First of all, I've had ex parte communications with the applicant. He discussed the project with me and solicited feedback, so that happened a couple of months ago. The second thing is, there was a question about the notice of preparation for the project on the public website for the city. This was raised by a member of the public. Apparently, on the PDF that's posted on the city's website, there was a munging of some scanned documents, but I've spoken with city staff, and my understanding is that the appropriate documents have been posted with the state clearinghouse and all other authorities in hard copy, and so there's no concern about the notice of preparation. So I just wanted to mention those two things. So are there any clarifying questions for the applicant?
Yes. Also for the staff, when you use the word, when we're not reviewing the merits of the project, so that means things like economic feasibility, none of those are, we're not getting involved in any of that tonight.
It's not the focus of the meeting, but if there's...
So, I'm going to open it up for clarifying questions for the Planning Commission. I do want to address two points. First of all, I've had ex parte communications with the applicant. He discussed the project with me and solicited feedback, so that happened a couple of months ago. Second thing is, there was a question about the notice of preparation for the project on the public website for the city. This was raised by a member of the public. I, apparently on the PDF that's posted on the city's website, there was a munging of some scanned documents. But I've spoken with city staff, and my understanding is that the appropriate documents have been posted with the State Clearinghouse and all other authorities in hard copy. And so, there's no concern about the notice of preparation. So, I just wanted to mention those two things. So, are there any clarifying questions for the applicant?
Yes. Also for the staff, when you use the word, when we're not reviewing the merits of the project, so that means things like economic feasibility, none of those are, we're not getting involved in any of that tonight.
It's not the focus of the meeting, but if there's, if there's relevance to the environmental document, it's absolutely fair to bring it up. And if you do have a strong preference or discomfort with one of the two variants, it would be helpful to hear that, but that is not the focus of your comments.
And then, I noticed on the drawings, there's this, it says drawings provided by RGJC South. And I don't see any architect attached to this.
That's correct. Right now, these are preliminary. I've been working with Hyatt. If, if there is some direction from the Commission tonight, we are going to take the direction that's preferred, and we're going to move forward with that. And the architect will, their name will be all over everything, and they'll be finishing it up. Right now, a lot of this is working with Hyatt directly. They won't be the direct, they won't be the architect in the final drawing, but they are the ones that, working with some of their prototype plans that we've worked off of.
Is it fair to state that you have kind of a chicken-and-egg problem with an EIR if you want public feedback on the project? And you have to have a proposal in front of consultants so you can do an EIR? And so, it's kind of a hard thing when you're doing architectural. Just could you clarify that point? I mean, what you're trying to accomplish with the designs and public feedback this early?
Well, as far as the design, we have a pretty good count on the parking and the size of the conference center, so that traffic will be able to move forward with either plan. They'll be able to make a decision. The number of rooms, all that can be pretty clear, so that either plan could move forward if they use the outside edges of the maximum numbers. If we have a better direction from the Commission tonight, then we can narrow that down. We'd be glad to do that.
Very good. Jimmy?
So, I just, I'm sorry. So, I'm just clear with the staff. This is a public-commercial project, and as a commissioner, I expect to see an architect attached to this. That's, that's part of the Practice Act. These are experienced people that understand all the different issues here. And so, as this moves forward, personally, I won't review it if it doesn't have that attached.
Well, the architect is aware of everything that's going on.
I'm just saying, I'm just making a clarifying question here.
The idea, the city-
Not wanting to debate it with you.
Okay. No, the city had requested an alternate design, and that's why we do not have one direction or the other at this point. The first design is very similar to the one-
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm still just asking technical questions about who's producing the information.
I would like to-
Not what it is, yeah.
I think-
To Jill for a moment?
I think that would be great. Thank you. You will see fully-developed architectural plans coming forward. Staff has accepted this type of plan for, as Chair Hernandez described, this chicken-and-egg component of the process right now, where we're trying to have enough of a project description to get this process going. But, design is iterative, as you know, and we will not accept any, any future drawings and design development and the kinds of studies that need to be done off the plans, including the aesthetic studies. There's a number of perspectives that will be evaluated for light, glare, and view, et cetera. So, that is known to us and, as well as the applicant.
Again, I'm just, it's not just this project. It's every project as it comes forward. Even conceptual sketches need to be, I think for the protection of our community, done by licensed professionals. So, and that was my only-
Through the chair?
Please.
So, I, yeah, I had several questions. So, first, I guess it wouldn't qualify as an ex parte communication because there have been public meetings about this project since the last time I talked with the applicant about this. It's probably been more than a year. And this is a new project, but on the, to err on, out of an abundance of caution, I'll just say I had seen earlier versions of this design, or a design. And what I'm looking at now is pretty new. So, we'll get that out of the way. With respect to SEQA, this site is a PUD, which means that we're trying to get the most pleasing result we can by developing it as a whole in the context of its surroundings. And I appreciated in your report that you mentioned the Wavecrest area on the other side of Highway 1. It's been a while, you know, it's funny, when you, you mentioned it as an agricultural area, is it actually in agricultural production, or is it open space, just not in production right now?
It's not in production right now. In fact, this last year, we never touched the field because of the environmental work that was going to be performed. We just left it. And so, it's been some time since they didn't touch the field. And after, after they did all their environmental, the city said it was okay to mow it, and then I had-
So, you're talking about the actual PUD, right?
Correct.
I'm asking about the context of the other side of Highway 1.
Oh.
So, the Wavecrest area.
Yeah.
Right? I believe, is that actually ag, or is that just open space?
You know, I don't know how they're treating that property. That, I don't know, I think they use it for hay or something.
Yeah, actually, it's, I'm not sure if they're harvesting right now, but I know often on-
It's in production.
They harvest hay and, or hay-like materials. I'm not a farmer.
Okay. There was a slide earlier in the deck where you, where it listed the model for the subjects of the, there was, on the left-hand side, there were key issues, and there were other issues on the right-hand side. And I noticed biological resources was one of the key issues, which I appreciate. And I noticed that, of course, in the presentation, you mentioned these wetlands, these areas that are near Highway 1. The report in the, the analysis also mentioned some other areas on the parcel that were seen as one-parameter wetlands, but maybe they didn't function as wetlands. I'm not, I'm not trying to bring them in or kick them out. I just want to be sure that that's within the scope of what's going to be addressed, and we aren't just putting them aside before they even get addressed.
That is a question probably for them, not for me, because I have no idea how that works.
Yeah. Am I only asking questions of the applicant now? I'm sorry. Did I, did I, okay. So, that's a question for staff, too?
Well, it's a clarifying question. So, staff and the applicant presented together. Yeah. So, can we move that over to staff, please?
Yes, that will be considered in the environmental impact report. They aren't shown here for the purposes of brevity. And they are potentially one-parameter wetlands based on the Coastal Commission's standards. And that is a delineation that they're going to have to make, and they will use the EIR in that decision, and so they will be considered in the EIR.
Okay. Thank you. Then, with respect to visual resources, it looked to me like all of the designs that were considered were three stories. Is that right? The ones that are currently being proposed?
That's correct.
And will the visual resources, you know, we recently had a fire tower conversation a while back, and it was kind of a-
We're trying to hide it, but go ahead.
Yeah. There's a lot of drama, there was a lot of drama on that. But again, it's another question about the environment in which the development is taking place. And I'm assuming that the visual resource analysis will understand the cumulative impact of the, the project with respect to whether it does or doesn't protrude above the ridgeline, since that's a visual resource, right?
Again, that's something I can't answer. I've heard other than that from the past meetings with the city attorney making comments. So, again, that's something probably needs to be addressed to staff.
So, let me, maybe I'm going in the wrong direction here. Is this too much detail?
Jimmy, so, I think maybe we can direct these questions back to city staff.
Okay.
So, do you have any other clarifying questions for the applicant?
I'll lay, I'll lay out. Thank you.
Very good. You have any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
I'd just like to make the last comment here. You know, we've been in Half Moon Bay since 1985, operating the James Ford dealership. This property became an opportunity. I've done land development for many years, mostly, well, all infill. I believe in doing infill. That's the smartest thing. This property made sense to develop because it's paved road completely around it. It's not growth-indusive. It made sense to try to do a project in this. I, you know, we're part of the community. I want to do a nice job. I want it to look beautiful. We're going, we're going over the top on the exterior for the design. Again, these are conceptual. We're going to take it to the next level. Have no problem doing that. I think it only benefits our community to have a beautiful hotel, and, you know, people are going to want to stay there. I had no interest in putting up a Crackerjack box, and so you can see how much different it is than the standard that you get, you know, potentially everywhere else. So, anyway, just wanted to make that comment.
I did have one clarifying question. On the south end of the project, it looks like you're putting in quite a few trees on the-
Let me switch that for you.
Can you clarify? I've heard city staff in conversation talk about a forest, if you will, on the south end of this project. Can you explain what you're doing with the massing of the trees here?
Well, it is going to be open space for the public, and we can do whatever. This is, again, conceptual. The idea was to maybe put a grove of like cypress trees or something that seems fitting for the site. And, you know, that first structure in that picture right there is like 420-some feet from the tip of the property. So, you're looking from, from right here to here. That's, you know, considerable distance, well longer than a football field. We, again, we used to have that southern structure. We removed it. We're trying to make the gateway look as nice as possible, and, you know, we're welcome to some different ideas that you guys may have.
Great. Thank you. I have no other questions for the applicant. I do want to ask clarifying questions for city staff, so, thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Jimmy, you had a few technical questions for city staff, so I'll direct back to you.
Really sorry for jumping the gun on that. I thought that was all part of the integrated thing, so. So, I wanted to be sure I understood the visual resource considerations. I saw it as a category. It looked like that was in the key category. Was that correct? Okay. So, we know that, I, I guess, I didn't actually see it. I'm guessing it was under aesthetics. Is that the place that it would have come up? Or was it in consistency with the local coastal program? You know the slide I'm talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Audrey Zagzetto, Circle Point Environmental Consultant.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Through the chair, to answer your question, the environmental document will consider all existing conditions on the site, all existing structures, and any sensitive visual resources and viewpoints as identified by the general plan. And also, so what we will do is take that, and we're going to create some visual simulations where we lay what the proposed architectural features of the project would look like against existing conditions to help us evaluate the visual impacts. And we will be looking at the general plan, visual policies, to evaluate a consistency analysis.
Right. General plan and zoning ordinance, 1837, please.
Yes. Any applicable land use regulations, including visual and any other topic, will be included in the EIR.
Right. That's the slide I was looking for. And I see greenhouse gases, which I appreciate. I just wanted, again, to get clarification. When we're talking about that, there's emissions associated with the construction. There's the, the emissions associated with additional visitors are waiting in queue time. There's emissions associated with the loss of the green stuff on the land. But there are also some gains, the electric vehicles, the solar panels. So, I want to be sure we're being comprehensive and are thinking about this.
Those are all great points, and those are all points that will, are already included in the scope of the EIR. So, we do analyze construction impacts, air quality admissions, including greenhouse gas, and operational. So, that would include vehicles going to the site, leaving the site. So, we would get the number of trips and evaluate that, any stationary resources.
And the bio, so, and then turning to the biological resources section, we already just touched on the possible one-parameter wetlands that aren't shown in the presentation, but it sounds like that's in your, in your wheelhouse.
So, that, we are using, looking at that criteria from the Coastal Commission, as well as any criteria from the Army Corps of Engineer-
Right.
-to help us identify wetlands-
Yeah.
...that are protected. And so, anything, so biological resources definitely include direct impacts, which are on the site, and indirect. So, anything around the site that could be impacted by the project, we would include that.
And I'm assuming that there's some kind of, the analysis would include some way to protect whatever wetlands are there from, that are, you know, protected wetlands-
Absolutely.
-from road, tar, you know, the damages associated with construction and the highway.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. There would be recommended protective measures, buffers with wetlands. The approach is first to avoid, minimize, and then mitigate.
I had heard that there was an ag pond either on this side or in a nearby site at some time that had been removed, and there'd been some kind of enforcement action. I'm not sure which of these categories, that kind of, you know, consistency with that work would appear, but I'm trusting that whatever, if there was an enforcement action that happened, you know, and I'm not suggesting that was Greg. He's one of the nicest guys in town. I mean, let's be clear about that. I want to be sure that we are capturing the history so that we're, we're doing a good job going forward, as opposed to simply the situation as it is if there's important unfinished business with respect to the parcel.
And the agencies will be commenting during this period as well. So, they are also really good for providing us historical information and enforcement issues.
I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Brian?
Thank you. I'm just taking a wild guess here, and imagine there might be some concern around traffic on this project. So, I'm wondering if you could help me understand the conference center, sort of how you define that? What sort of parameters are there, certain IT numbers or rates that you use for that? Or sort of what's the, how we approaching the generation rates there?
So, we, the approach to traffic is we take the proposed land uses on the site, and the traffic consultant uses the ITE, which is the Institute-
Transportation Engineer.
Transportation E. And within that, they do have the land uses, and it calculates the number of trips that would be generated. So, for that particular land use, if it's not clear, then sometimes what they do is do a comparison analysis. So, they will take a similar-type land use with the same size square footage and calculate or, or count how many trips go to and leave the site, and then the timing, weekdays, weekends, that type of thing.
And so, I know there's some recent SEQA guidance around vehicle miles traveled versus level of service. Do you have a thought on the approach for this?
I could defer to Jill on that topic. However, I will explain that for the approach for the EIR, we're currently using level of service. That's the current approach for traffic that is acceptable by the city. The vehicle miles traveled is a new approach that could be coming out probably in 2019. It would, it might be published by that time. However, we do collect the vehicle miles traveled information and would be prepared to switch gears and move to the appropriate methodology or approach, should that change with the city.
Great. Thank you. And this may be a question more for Jill, but of course, we're in a general plan update process. We have the existing general plan in place, and obviously, very deep in the general plan update. How is this project going to be approached, sort of with that in mind?
Well, part of that question is up to, of course, the Planning Commission and your direction on any policy changes that you might be looking for in the LC Smith PUD, which is what, what this is designated in your land use map. That said, I think the, the really important component of the crossover, the connection to your SEQA document, is the cumulative analysis. And it's the build-out of the existing plan, which is your, your 96LUP, versus what the build-out of the, the plan that we're working on would be. And I, I can tell you, I think that our, and we don't look at the maximum build-out. We look at a planning horizon for the sake of SEQA documents. So, we'd be looking at 2040. So, we'll be calculating that and using- So we'll be calculating that and using the most conservative approach, which is probably the plan you have on the books now. So just want to reassure you about that. The other, I want to make a note on the trip generation rates associated with hard-to-define land uses such as the conference center. Audrey answered that perfectly, that's exactly what we'll do, but the next step and that is the subconsultant to Audrey and her team is W Trans. They will share their trip generation rates. I, I like to see the math. We are going to see what rates are most appropriate and I will choose the most appropriate one that is more conservative, which is my practice in traffic studies. So I just share that with you.
If I might take on your point, the clarification would be, we have a PUD. Does this mean we're going to have, is this, part of this project going to be a specific plan coming forward for the PUD? I mean, it's kind of seems like that's what we're doing here.
So that's a great question. This is, I believe, the only PUD that says, I think it says, "A specific plan may be prepared." And thus it is not required for this particular one. What I can share with you, though, is the specific plan for planning a one parcel site that is in an existing built environment where utilities are present, it really doesn't need some of the components of, of what specific plan requires and the kind of financing and infrastructure analysis that go into specific plans. So the kind of analysis you'll be doing through a coastal development permit and design review along with the CIR, in my opinion, are more than adequate for assessing this particular property.
Les?
Picking up on Brian's point, Half Moon Bay is an area where we have lots of people visit, very few of them stay. Why? Because there isn't much to, there are too few places here. So the question is, do we have any way to figure out if we have more hotel space, compare that to some other areas, how many more people would spend the night here rather than travel to some other place back and forth so that from a traffic standpoint, that might be modeled in one way or the other?
So if I understand your question correctly, you're asking perhaps on travel behavior and how many of those trips coming through the city would stay at the hotel? Yes? The traffic report will have to make some assumptions regarding that and that also could be based on other case studies, other hotels. We would definitely have to take that under consideration and with our assumptions go with a conservative number of assuming how many of those folks coming to the city would actually stay at the hotel. And include that in the report. That's a very good comment and a very good observation. And that's something that we'll double check with our traffic scope to ensure that that's covered.
Great. Any other clarifying questions?
I did just have one for staff. So the applicant mentioned that there were meetings with the Coastal Commission and I'm guessing that the Coastal Commission staff wouldn't have jumped in and made a lot of assertions early about what they liked or didn't like. But if we did get anything that is relevant, that's, you know, to our, our process and for the public, it would be better to disclose it sooner than later.
I'm going to, for the record, be real clear about this. There's been one meeting and there's no written communication, there was a discussion. It was an introduction of the plan on the table with the Coastal Commission, our peers, our colleagues up in San Francisco. They did comment that, yes, it looks like you have wetlands and yes, the buffer is a hundred feet and how are you going to deal with that? They didn't make a conclusion. That's how they are going to be at this point. And they also encouraged our applicant to think about lower cost visitor serving uses, which is something that he presented to you about his project, something he's researching.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm going to, not seeing any other comments or clarifying questions. I'm going to open it up to public comment. Thank you. So I'm going to open with Melanie Yates, followed by Dave Shore. And when you come up, please speak into the microphone and make sure the green light is on. Microphone, please. We can't hear you.
Okay. I would like to address the process this Planning Commission has adopted knowingly or unknowingly that is being used to usher in the Hyatt Hotel and all further land use in the city. The Planning Commission and the City Council have collaborated with some non-governmental organizations or NGOs who are here solely to implement and ensure the city complies to UN Agenda Twenty-One dash thirty. No exceptions, it is all pre-planned. EIR is used to push the agenda. Common Knowledge Group, Circle Point, Code for America are just, to name a few. Here's what these NGOs are here to do. They collaborate with government agencies and they take great care to select like-minded and easily swayed people to set up stakeholder councils, task force scoping sessions, and address predetermined and sometimes fake needs. Then during these stakeholder meetings, the consensus, consensus process is used, which is also has a predetermined outcome to meet a numerous of the Agenda Twenty-One goals. The process is designed to take the public policymaking function away from elected officials who are accountable to be the people and place it in the hands of non-elected officials while giving the appearance of broad public input to direct the decision-making process. On Common Knowledge website, one of the collaborators with the city, they promote setting up listening meetings, which this city just implemented. I went to one of these meetings and the people thanked the city council for the meeting when it was clearly the brainchild of the NGO. According to their website, they say that the people have a problem with how to listen and we just have been doing it all wrong. Well, I personally take offense to that and I can listen just fine. This group is also involved with the program called Housing for All being implemented in Redwood City, Burlingame, Portola Valley, and Half Moon Bay, another pre-planned agenda program. Additionally, Circle Point's webpage, they highlight that one of their marketing strategies is to change behavior. We can only guess what that means. Once again, I take a print, offense to that. My behavior is none of some NGO's business. Of course, nowhere is defined-
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
-individual rights of the, of the individual. I am well aware, UN Agenda Twenty-One will keep marching forward while we continue to witness the implementation of Housing for All and all other mandatory UN Agenda items as we trample our rights.
Ma'am, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Dave Shore, followed by Harold, I can't get your last name, Harold, but you live on Sierra Street.
Dave Shore, four twenty-three St. Joseph, Half Moon Bay. Anything I can't fit into one hundred and seven, it's there. Anything I can't fit into one hundred and seventy-one seconds, I will get to you guys in writing. Couple key points, there is a five oh one C three being formed right now, which will be available to educate citizens and to fight both the Hyatt Development and the Dunes Project. And anybody who wants to keep you informed. There are a lot of topics to hit, the SEQA checklist, I'll get to it if I can. Couple main points, the wetlands buffer of a hundred feet is, I would consider that inviolable and the current plans have it at fifty feet in points and I, I think that you guys have to look at that very carefully. SEQA requires a modified project alternative to be evaluated. I think it'd be very important and very valuable in this particular case that you use as the baseline for that reduced project alternative, incorporate into that the, the analysis of what's called investment-backed expectations, not trying to deprive the property owner of their right to develop their property to some extent, but what is the level that the constitutional guarantee, the, the smallest project that the city would allow without depriving him of his rights? That'd be a very important baseline and to give the city, the Planning Commission a chance to weigh in on a project of that scope as opposed to this thing. The wetlands delineation is really important. It should be noted that the wetlands delineation, which was very thorough, the site visits were done in May and June of last year, although it was a very wet winter. Observation of the site from late November through mid-April showed continuous inundation over probably thirty percent of the entire site. Inundation does not equal wetland delineation, but it suggests that the consultants maybe should go back next winter when it's actively wet and reinvestigate areas where continuous inundation for a period of five months was observed all over that site. I've got some photographs to back that up, not from a very good camera, so they're not the best, but I'll submit them electronically as well. Story polls should go up as soon as possible, as soon as they're preliminary designs, so the public can get an idea of what this might look like. That would require the applicant to more firmly delineate his plans. Wetland buffer zones spoken about. The SEQA checklist itself, the SEQA checklist forms which should be considered heavily are aesthetics, one A, C, and D, section two, A, section four, A, C, and D. Don't have time to give you the narrative on this. Greenhouse gas, gas emissions growth inducing impacts are very important. That's section seven, sections A and B. Section nine, part C and D. Part ten, part B. Part thirteen, A. Part fifteen, A. Part sixteen, A, B, and F. And under mandatory findings of significance, category B applies for this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So Harold, followed by Gretel Merrill.
Actually, my name is Harold Herman. I'm a resident of the coast side since two thousand. I'm, I'm speaking as a private residence and not on behalf of any legal entity. So first point is cumulative impact, impact of all the large-scale developments at different planning and approval stages. So I start north, Montero, we have one hotel with thirty-one rooms. There was another one in the plans, not sure where that is. Moss Beach, we have Big Wave, a total of eight, of, eight buildings, including a large office park. The five office buildings alone equates the size of one and a half Walmarts plus housing for disabled, boat storage, parking for five hundred cars. Interesting to note, all this development is in one of the top five tsunami flood zones in California. We have Mid Penn in Moss Beach pushing for seventy-one unit development across Montero Lighthouse. We have Air Granada, multi-unit complexes, including the three-story Mavericks apartment. We have an RV park, fifty sites, Harbor Village in Half Moon Bay. We have Pacific Ridge that's going to life pretty quick. Pretty soon, we have the Best Western with forty-six rooms, the Hyatt Hotels we talked about. We have the Dunes Beach, Surf Beach, RV Park zone for up to hundred fifty units. And we have hundred-plus units, high-end city housing, I think these are on the mix. Plus on top, we have annual infiller forms and second units according to the LCP and forecasted two million visitors to the coast side per year. So the Board of Supervisors, San Mateo County published a connect to coast side report. The study has major flaws and basically doesn't reflect current coast side traffic realities. The study fails to model a complex coast side traffic system and we see that over and over, so the developers just focus on their little small development, one mile radius, two mile radius, but doesn't, don't look at the cumulative impacts. Doesn't specify any large-scale developments in the report nor does it provide underlying assumptions. Having said that, two, two interesting points, the majority of intersections, road segments along the coast side are projected to become unacceptable by two thousand forty under build-out conditions, so that time might be a lot sooner than we think. The study suggests five additional traffic lights and fourteen pedestrian crossings at street level, not over, not under pass between the tunnel and Half Moon Bay area. So the additional ones based on the planning we see here with the large-scale developments. So we look at two traffic lights in Moss Beach, potentially another third one with Mid Penn, so that section going to gridlock and based on the map here, so there will be one where the Hyatt is and then also terrace going to go live, which will serve as a good case study. Sanitary sewer overflows, resist density, it's a local not-for-profit advocates for sensible planning protection of the San Mateo Coast, just released a forty-page document outlining one hundred one sewer overflows on the coast side between two thousand eleven, two thousand seventeen. Twenty Category Ones, releasing eight hundred eighty thousand gallons to drainage channels leading to surface water, e.g. ocean. We are getting fined by the San Francisco Regional Water Quality Control Board because of a major spill in Miramar. SAM's five-year infrastructure plan for two thousand fourteen lists forty-four projects, ten of which are Priority One. We have money for two and one comes out of the reserve fund. So Half Moon Bay had thirty-nine sewer overflows, eight Category Ones. And the question here is, how do we handle the additional sewer volume without going fines? And actually, it's our ratepayer money, I guess we're going to all, as a community, we're going to pay for that.
Thank you for your comments, sir. You've gone well over.
That one final remark to the developer, you state you're part of the community. I, I'm not sure if you do that to the community, if the community is willing to support your business, current and future business, because we have choices and we can buy our products somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So Gretel Merrill and then Edward Ferron.
Thank you very much. I am glad to be here this evening only because I think it's very important that we hear from the community regarding this project. Beyond disappointed that it's even on the table and not exactly sure how we even got here. I'm in reference to the gentleman who was talking about the plans and how he's been here since the eighties. You know then, as well as all of us, that we need to watch out for each other in this community. And I don't care how beautiful or how many hours have been spent on, you know, drawing the designs for this and I, with all due respect, it's not a great analogy, but you can put lipstick on a pig, but guess what? It's still a pig. I, if we're going to do something for the community and want to beautify the community, how about a park? If we're really happy about building things, how about a park? How about a rec center for the community that can serve the youth and the senior citizens? Everyone as a whole. This hotel does none of that. I, I'm so disappointed and honestly, I have to take responsibility for some of this too, because for far too long, I've been a complacent member of the community, having worked over the hill, having to get up at five AM, get my son to before car at by seven AM, get over the hill by eight and then back by six. I said I didn't have enough time and shame on me. I can't imagine that my story is unique as there are thousands of dual-income families on the coast who have the same, if not worse, commute every day, but in hindsight, this is no excuse for not engaging in and being an active participant in our community. I blame myself for resting easy and believing that the powers that be would watch out for and champion our community's best interests. And sadly, the movement behind this project exhibits a serious lack of judgment in what is best for our community and it's a real shame. When I heard about the project, I was stunned and gravely disappointed that the councils and communities at large even considered this as something that our, our community even needs or wants. Half Moon Bay is in the black financially and hotel occupancy at its best is at seventy-five percent. We don't need another hotel. That's like the last thing we need. How is it that we came, that came to pass that the Hyatt's best interest is more important than ours? We are living in such a truly magical place, which can be taken away in a blink of an eye if we are not careful. The choice, and it is a choice, to even consider putting a hotel or conference center is at best a terrible decision. Please stop this before it's too late. Please stop this before it's too late. There will be no going back to our beautiful bucolic ocean town if this project moves any further. Our community is not served for the better by this proposed bill, and we all know better. I'm not against progress, again, a park, a community center, something that will serve the whole. So in close, please, 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 shut this project down. I can't believe we've gotten this far. Put our community needs first, and make this right before we go down a path we can't come back from. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
So I appreciate the passions that are on display tonight. I hope my questions show that I, you know, I think all of us care, but I'd like to be clear that in a public forum like this, everyone deserves respect, everyone deserves to be heard. We should, if we can, try to resist ad hominem attacks. Let's focus on the merits or demerits, as you see it, of the project, and try to keep the individuals and the personalities out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Edwin?
Yes, on that note, I wanted to thank the planning commission for your service to the community, and I have some bad news input. I wanted to talk about the community input process a little bit. I'll give you the benefit of the doubt that you want honest, together honest, community input from your community. So I want you to consider the fact that in the 1990 census, ten percent of the Half Moon Bay population was Latino, Spanish descent. In the 2000 census, it was around twenty percent, and in the most recent census, 2010, it was thirty-one point four percent. That upward trend, it mirrors what's happening in California in general, and in many urban centers around the Bay Area, for sure. So as you saw from the initial poll, a lot of people came here because of Nextdoor. I'm on Nextdoor a lot, and there's not a lot of Latinos on Nextdoor. Others came by virtue of seeing documents on the web. I think PDF, densely printed English documents are not really accessible to the Latino population. Holding a meeting here, I know this is a great place to hold a meeting, but holding a meeting in a building that's next to a barden, iron barden, parking lot filled with police cruisers is not going to get you a lot of Latino input there either. The good news is that there's a lot of well-researched and evidenced ways to get Latino input. Those include having focus groups at places where there are few comfortable schools, community centers, et cetera. Moonridge Apartments is right down the road. I'm sure that they pass by the project site often, so there should be an opportunity for them to sort of weigh in, and I think it's a win-win situation, because if you get that input, you might find some unexpected opportunities that come for the project in terms of the design element, in terms of the cultural competence of the staff there, et cetera. So I hope, I'm gonna be back at other meetings to weigh in on the, my yea or nay on the project and the design and stuff, but I just hope that you were to take the steps necessary to get input from what's at least thirty-three percent of the population in the county and in the city. And failing that, I guess the argument could be made that you've excluded a class of citizens by design. So hopefully you will take steps to rectify that.
Commissioner Hernandez appreciates your comments. Tom Carey, followed by Marla or Maria Yates.
Good evening, Tom Carey. I live on Magellan Avenue in Half Moon Bay. I've been here my whole life, probably sixty-three years, and for the last eight months is the first time I've actually lived in this town. And so I've got a different perspective as being a landowner and seeing what goes on. I met Mr. Jameson in 1985. He wrote me a letter, he wanted to buy some infill lots, and I resisted him for about a year. And finally, we acquiesced to him, and I have to admit, over the past fifteen years, we sold him some others. His projects are aesthetically beautiful inside and out. Our family has found him, his word is excellent, he holds a contract, and he builds a good product. As far as this project, my point of view is I'm for, I like the two-building concept of the hotel. I think it breaks it up, it makes it look a little bit better, but that's my point of I hear what the people have to say, but my biggest people at the city is affordability. When people now, when I'm living here and they come visit me, they want to stay in a nice hotel. What they stay in are all these houses that are for rent, and what they pay to stay, and I hope your study takes that into effect, is an enormous fee. I can't stay at the Ritz. The Ritz is too expensive. What type of person in Half Moon Bay can invite their friends to stay at the Ritz? It's unaffordable. In fact, I can't, and when I have a cocktail, I'll be honest with you, which I like to have, I go next door. It's just an expensive one. We need a hotel that has either a Hyatt, or a Hilton, or a Marriott, because people stay with points. And you're gonna get a lot of people that drive over here, that stay in these fancy places and these houses, and they're paying fifteen hundred a month, not fifteen hundred for a weekend, and they'll stay at this hotel, because the Hyatt, it's mid-price, it's in between what we have now today, which is just average hotels, where you can stay at the Ritz. There's nothing in between. Tell me. There isn't. And people really travel today with the card. Everybody's on the points, and I'm sure when you travel, you probably do the same, or one on your credit card. And traffic's a problem. I'd like to see a traffic, see that looked at, especially, and I support the project, and I hope, I look forward to, as it goes through the time.
Marcia Yates, Moss Beach. I'm here to just talk about the infrastructure. We already have a problem with the sewage. SAM and the Joint Powers, Half Moon Bay, Montero, and El Guanado Water Districts are having problems getting the sewage out. How are we going to handle another huge hotel with a hundred and fifty rooms and all the sewage? And even though we've had some great water lately, and the water districts are saying, yeah, we've got water, we don't have the water. I mean, as Harold mentioned, we have all this extra building going on, how are we going to deal with the sewage and the water? What if there's a drought? I mean, in 2014, we were using water that was a thousand years old. That water is not going to be there forever. It is a limited resource. And also the traffic, if you think about it, there's one way in and one way out, and I don't, I don't know how the hotel is thinking about this, but where are the employees going to be coming from? And where are they going to live? Are they living on the coast side? Most likely not. We're already having a housing crunch here, and now we're going to add employees and all these people coming to a hotel. And we have a hundred and ninety-five parking spaces for a hundred and fifty rooms. Where are the employees going to park? Is there going to be mass transit to get these people from the airport and to? These are infrastructure problems that I don't think that we are taking into serious consideration. So I just think that something like this really needs, we need to have a viable infrastructure, a viable mass transit system, before we can even consider doing any kind of big building. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Donald, followed by Larry Gandelman.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for your work. I've lived here thirty years. First time I've been to a planning meeting, and I like to say, the lady who just spoke, I agree with so much of what she said about the infrastructure waters, we're having a hard time handling that right now. My main objection to this thing here is the danger of pulling out on that intersection, it's an extremely difficult intersection to pull out in front of the fire station, there's been a lot of accidents there. And the other thing is, there's low-income housing up there, up there on the right. You see that circle, is that's where kids play. It's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit there, and that's where the kids play on that development, and there's a lot of kids play there. And I always worry about them running out from behind cars, but I live here, and I work here, and I'm looking out for kids, but these visitors come to the conference center, they're not going to be aware of these type of situations. What about inviting those people who live in that development? Have they been informed? I tell you, we're very uninformed, okay? I'm sick of people coming along doing fancy glossy presentations, like the other lady said. Before she said it, this male said it, this really is like putting lipstick on the pig. So you know what you do? This is how it works. You buy a bit of land, and you hang the name Hyatt on it. That's the lipstick, and this is the pig. Now, this should be, is a much lesser use, this is maximizing, this does not serve the public, and as Mr. Evans said, you need to have an architect look at something like this, because this is a very special town, and above all, the gridlock. We have terrible gridlock, and I can't emphasize enough to council, commissioners, please look into that, because it takes so long. In the summer, coming down this stretch of road from Santa Cruz, I live in Miramar, it took me from Ford dealership here, the fire station, to my house regularly, it takes nearly as long to go from there to my house in Miramar as it does from Santa Cruz to there. It's forty-five minutes. So please look into this. This is ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous, and again, it is the lipstick on a pig. It was a lipstick on a pig when it was presented before, it's ugly, and it's such a traffic hazard. And nothing should be done until that area is fixed, where you pull out there in front of the fire station. I implore anyone who hasn't had to pull out there to try it, because the traffic moves down that road, it's a forty-five mile an hour speed limit, but they're typically doing sixty-five, and it's very hard to judge the speed limit, you know? I passed my driving test this week, I scored ninety-nine percent on my driving test, and that requires pulling out there absolutely everything I've got in terms of driving ability, pulling out of that. So please bear that in mind. I mean, the kids, environmentally, there's no red-legged frogs or anything like that on this one, but you know what?
We've made note of your comments.
Kids there, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Larry Gandelman, and that this is it for public comments. If you have a public comment, it's your last chance to submit a card.
I love going last. Of all the people that have spoken here tonight, I live three blocks to the north of this site. I was here back in October of 2016, when an architect was here presenting the original plan. I'm interested in a couple of things. I'm interested in the aesthetics of Main Street. So right now, we don't have a bookended Main Street. You come in off of Ninety-two, you make a left, and as you proceed further south, it gets darker. When we were here in October of sixteen, Citarella was still open. Citarella is no longer open. I'm interested in the community. I'm interested in keeping our Main Street vibrant and keeping our merchants busy. I think that's also important in a community like ours. I've been in the house over here on Royal Leon for fifteen years, I've been in Half Moon Bay for thirty years. I realize what the traffic is, and Donald, I appreciate your comments, but you live in Miramar, I live here. On the weekends, Saturdays, Sundays, holidays, I don't care where you're going, you're not moving on one going north. Anybody who knows that, hotel, no hotel, you're not moving. You're not moving on Main Street, and Bev can tell you, you're not moving on Johnston either. So traffic, it's an issue. This does not make a difference in the traffic, and once you see the study, you'll see that. If you have people spending the night at that hotel, maybe that mitigates some of the traffic, but that traffic's not going away unless someone decides to widen Highway One, and chances of that happening are not going to happen. From a noise standpoint, I live in this area, so is the hotel gonna create more noise? I would doubt that. Now, as you move south on Main Street, with the advent of sacrilege, being a restaurant, it's great to see people out there on the deck, out there by the fire pits on the weekends and during the evening. It adds some vibrancy to downtown, and I think that's important. If something like this does not happen on the southern end of town, what you're gonna see is more and more merchants shuttering their doors. And is that what we want in our community? I don't think so. And as far as the revenue and this being a blight, I don't think the Ritz has been a blight from a tax perspective, or generating revenue for the community. So I would harshly disagree with that. So again, people can state their opinions, but I live here. So when you're talking to me about traffic, about studies, Donald, I appreciate your comments, but my kids played in this area, so I know it better than you do. I know you have a business over not far off of Main Street, and I appreciate that.
Can I ask you not to make any ad hominem comments to members of the public?
Got you. So again, I think for the health of our community and the ability for people to stay, realize the beauty of Half Moon Bay, we need a mid-range hotel, which the Hyatt Place would be. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comments. Not seeing anybody else rushing to the stands, I'm gonna wrap that up, and I'm gonna direct it back to the planning commission for discussion. So who would like to start?
So thank you for all the comments, pro or con, they're valuable and they're welcome. I will say at the outset that there is not a predetermined outcome on this project. I appreciate that those concerns are sincerely held, but I want to reinforce that, you know, there is a healthy blend of values and attitudes on this commission and at the city council, and I hope you'll give us a chance to change your thinking about that, if you think that there is a deal that's gone down, and it's a done deal, because that's not how we do business here. I tried to make some broad categories of topics that I heard from the public and build them into a synopsis, and I'm sure all of you tried to do the same thing. I heard broadly, traffic-related resource, which I would include infrastructure broadly. I heard aesthetic, I heard public safety, I heard economic, and let me see, I heard, although I wouldn't, maybe it's a category, with respect to alternate uses of the land. And I think that, you know, our purpose here tonight is to explore what areas we think the EIR should go in, rather than make a call about what our values is. So the process is more deliberative, there'll be some thought about that, there'll be some ideas presented by the consultants, and everyone will have a chance to weigh in and comment on those results, as will the planning commission. So all of those struck me as well-thought-out, relevant subjects, and I hope that the work that comes out and the preparation will incorporate them. I'm gonna collect more of my thoughts, but I just wanted to get those topics out and then give the other commissioners a chance to weigh in why, continue thinking.
Yeah, I would echo Commissioner Benjamin's comments, and to those who are new to this process, or new to planning commission meetings, welcome, and I'm glad that you're here, and glad that the project has brought you here and engaged, so that's a good thing. I think it was pointed out in the beginning that, you know, there's been meetings, there's been conversations done around this project, but for us, this is really, we're at the beginning of this process, and there was a lot of calls to study things, and that's exactly why we're here, to sort of set the parameters on what needs to be studied. So all good comments, and as Commissioner Benjamin said, there's been no predisposed sort of opinions, we need those studies to analyze the traffic, analyze the aesthetics, everything else. I really appreciate the comments about the Latino outreach and reaching out to the community, especially some of the neighborhood there, so I hope that could be incorporated into the SEQA outreach process, preferably before the close of the comment period. I think that would be key. I also thought some of the... be key. I also thought, some of the, I think there are some legitimate concerns around the, the intersection there, traffic concerns around that area, both from a traffic perspective but also pedestrian and bicyclist perspective, that, that stretch of Main Street's used for a lot of folks to sort of stage bike riding, offloading their bikes, getting off there. So looking at the impacts of that, and I would suggest, I know recreation was sort of written out as one of the topic areas that were being evaluated here. So whether we get at that through transportation analysis or something else, I think the, that area is used by cyclists now. And anything that would impact that, or I think there's other alternatives. I'm not necessarily saying that's the best use currently, but, but would want to consider that and the safety on, on cyclists on Main Street certainly. I thought there were some interesting points that were raised around short-term rentals, employee commutes, and, and what, what impact or beneficial or negative that this project would potentially have and how that would, you know, how much of the use, I don't know how you get there, but if you can capture, you know, how much of the visitors staying here are currently staying on the coast in, say, short-term rentals. And are they, are, is it creating demand or is it sort of capturing something that's latent and already out there? I think that's a, it's an important question to look at. And, you know, for every housing project that comes in, we, we talk a lot about water as well and, and understanding the water and infrastructure and use. So I know there's a lot more work that needs to be done in terms of the design. And there's, there'll be a lot of details in terms of landscaping and green features, but I'll just take this opportunity to just employ the applicant as it moves forward to the extent that there are opportunities to really make those, those green features that were alluded to real and not just, not just sort of window dressing, but, but looking at recycled water, green infrastructure, solar energy, any of those types of components, I think will be key to making this viable. And then, and then aesthetics. And not just, not just the aesthetics of the site, but yeah, really how, how does it tie into the town? How does it tie into Main Street? And recognizing that, you know, I've, I've been on the coast for about ten years now. And one of the first meetings that I came to was a downtown specific plan. And there was a lot of talk about the southern end of Main Street and creating a, a southern gateway. So looking at it from the aesthetics, not only just of what's on site, but really how does it relate to, how does it relate to our downtown as a whole? And what sort of a, what sort of a statement does it make as you're coming into that area, I think will be something I'll want to see. So with that, that's my comments for now. Les?
Yeah. I think my, our goals here certainly are to ensure that whatever projects come before us are legal, they meet whatever standards are set, what the law says. And, and from there. But as far as the EIR, which is what the, what the focus is, I think one of the comments I heard that I also jotted down was, what is a project like this, hundred forty-six hotel rooms, how does that mitigate home rentals? I'm not sure how that will, how you can model that, but I think that's something important because if homes on the coast are being purchased or people are leasing out homes, that means less people are actually living on the coast. And we're obviously in a housing shortage situation. And if hotels can help that situation, that could be positive. So that's one aspect. And the other one is in terms of alternative uses for the, for the land. I mean, I've read through the, the comments there. Just want to make sure that since this is a PUD, that certainly the other alternate uses for a PUD are explored in the report. And perhaps what the environmental impacts of that would be versus the, the hotel. For example, does a, does the average home or apartment use more water, more sewage, less sewage? Those, those factors that I think were brought up by some of the speakers. So those are some of the things I'd want to see addressed in the, in the EIR. Thank you.
Thanks, Les. John?
The nice thing about going later is half the audience has already left. So, I think I'll be very specific here. I like the idea that there's a mechanism for a trail going north-south that continues on this property rather than putting it on public property. That maybe could be looked at as also, can it wind its way into downtown and not necessarily just up Highway One? In that, I don't know if that's part of the EAR or if that study comes later in the process. The kind of elephant in the room, well, I, I agree with Commissioner Deman that alternative uses is worth exploring. I don't know what impact is the planning commission we have on that. What I see here is a proposed one hundred and forty-one guest rooms, no matter what the alternative is. And I don't know whether there's a rock and a hard place with this property owner and the Hyatt system of what they expect to be able to do and what he has control over as a landowner. And so I don't know that we can say, as a commission, I don't know that, that we have much to say about the feasibility of, of this project. However, the elephant in the room is how it's going to look. You know, in this, no matter how we want to slice it, this is the southern gateway to the town. And this will be, because it's all one parcel, what gets done here is going to be what people's image is when they get to Half Moon Bay. When they first come up the highway, they kind of see the golf course, they see some agricultural things, and then they kind of get, you know, the city really kind of starts here where the old Highway One used to be. And so, the, that's a challenge to this developer is to make this more of the scale of Half Moon Bay. And if they insist that it has to be one hundred and forty-one rooms, then they're going to have to be a lot more creative about how that happens. The town is not large massive buildings except for Stone Pine Center. And we don't see that anywhere except if you're back in that area, see those large buildings by the post office. It's an assemblage of small outbuildings. It's a little farm town. And that's, I think, what we all like about the character of this town. And so, it seems as though, when I'm looking at the, just the pictures that are in front of me here, it's pretty clear that the building that's rectangular and running east-west, that's next to the car dealership, you know, kind of fits the massing of that kind of clunky industrial car dealership. It seems like anything else on that site needs, the way to break up the scale is to make more smaller buildings. And if they need to provide this much parking, it either has to disperse around those buildings or if they're going to have a building that has this much square footage, you know, they're, they're all going to say it can't be done. But there's other projects where they did put parking halfway or all the way underground. There's also different ways to deal with the massing with roof lines and the building materials. So this looks like it belongs on the coast. And it's not, I just, I feel like when I look at these elevation drawings, and it's the same thing when the project first came to us, I thought I was getting off the freeway in Vacaville, you know, going to a hotel. It was the same look. And, and like I said, and I don't know if, if that's a corporate challenge to deal with. But my input would be that if this is different, like, nobody complains about the size of the Ritz hotel. It really fits in that site fairly well. It's a pretty big building. They've done a lot of work with the materials they use, the roof lines, the way the massing is dealt with. Much more expensive project, you know, much more complicated site planning. But they got a lot of bang for the buck on the site that they used. And it blends in fairly well with the look of our little farm town here. You know, this is not Manhattan Beach, you know, it's not. So, that's my specific input is, in the EIR process, is there a difference between smaller outbuildings, one big large building? If there's underground parking, if that's, if they need to do one hundred and forty-one rooms, what, what's, what's the impact of that? And I'm not talking about whether or not it pencils out. And I don't like hearing at all, if something isn't financially feasible, why is that Half Moon Bay's problem? You know, and that, so I'm going to stand here as a, as a community member and not as a practicing business person here, you know, that this is my town. And every time I come up from wherever I'm from the south, this is a gateway that I'm going to have to look at. I, I think it's a great opportunity for this developer. If we have the city build a gateway, I think that's risky. I think we're going to, you know, rarely see public projects that are exciting, you know, it's, they're much better done by the private sector or by competition, something like that. So this is a real opportunity for this developer to do a really sensitive project if, if they're able to work with the corporate structure of the hotel. And could be a great gateway to our town. A lot of potential. But I also agree with the analogy that someone said that, you know, you know, lips, you know, makeup on, you know, stage makeup is great for the theater, but it's not good for our permanent town. So.
All right. Les?
Yeah. An issue came up on, on safety for the intersection by the fire station. I kind of want to bring that up. I believe this group approved a plan for that intersection. And that's, that's kind of fixed. So it certainly seems to me that whatever this project does, traffic-wise, intersection-wise, has to meet with the standards that we've already set for that project. So I just want to put that down on the, on the record. Thank you.
So, thank you all for coming. It's nice to have the public here. It's a lonely group in planning commission meetings generally. But a lot of the issues you've raised regarding infrastructure, sewage, traffic in particular, the look and scale of buildings that we put in the community or things we're addressing through the general plan update. Those of you who haven't participated in that, the city's always collecting feedback. And I encourage you to continue to share your comments. But these are problems we're trying to address as a city. And, and we take these very seriously. So, a lot of the comments that have been raised are very relevant to not just this project, but the broader issues we're trying to address as a planning commission on, on your behalf. And frankly, that's why I got involved in this whole process. John, I wanted to address two of the comments you made. And I think when we go back to the slide that you had, Jill, the alternatives, projects and alternatives. So, as we go through this process, part of what we expect to come out of the EIR is, is in fact, no project is an option and a reduced or revised project scale. And, and I, I would encourage city staff to consider a smaller project. One hundred room hotel is an example. The feedback, and I'll share the comments I had with the applicant, my concern is having a project that's dominated by parking. It's, it's not what we want to see in Half Moon Bay. It's, especially as a southern gateway. It's an area of concern. I would, so that's, that's a separate issue around the design. You know, the, the parking itself is an aesthetics issue, is the way I would look at it. So it's something worth considering. I would also look at the parking in terms of the drainage. We have talked about the wetland. If there's a way to use a pervious surface there, there are different options. But, you know, lots of asphalt is not especially attractive and, and doesn't really help the drainage, especially some of the drainage issues we have to the west where we see the erosion on, on the bluffs. I think these are integrated projects. And changes that have been made in the last twenty years have increased drainage issues in Seymour and other areas, as we've discussed in various other projects. We have an obligation as a planning commission to create more access to the beach for everybody. And so as we go through this project, I think the, the concept that was floated of creating a program for everybody to share in this hotel is, is fairly open-minded and novel. I've never really heard of anybody talking about that before. I don't know how implementable or manageable it'll be, but certainly an open-minded approach and something that I did want to call out. I also want to call out the fact that we've had a lot of meetings about short-term rentals. We've recently talked about that subject. And, you know, having affordable and nice hotels, frankly, less shabby hotels and something less costly than the Ritz would be a nice change. But I think that's part of the affordability and serving the community more broadly. One very critical item I want to make sure we cover, as you think about this project, you have a, a theater across the street from the hotel. For those of you who haven't been to the theater, at night, parking there is a challenge. And more importantly, safety is a challenge. You have kids darting out to go across the street. The way the cars are aligned there, the way the foliage is laid out, the street, the way the sidewalks are, it's a problem. And so as we look at the EIR, you need to think about what happens with the theater and the timing around that. I would encourage you to look at the occupancy rates of the Ritz and the way that they put on conferences. I know my company has done four conferences there in the last two years. And I've attended a few. It's, it's a different type of scale, but when you're trying to be conservative, they have massive events with lots of people. And so they probably have some data on what's going on there. On VMT versus level of service, you know, the state is going towards more of a level of, sorry, VMT model. And if that's where we're going as a city, it probably makes sense to, you know, we're going to defer to you on this, but VMT seems to be a more appropriate standard. But, you know, it's worth taking into account the project here. One of the speakers raised a question of story polls. We're not at a point where story polls are required. That comes through design review. So I think we can address that later. That's not where we're at right now. I think I've addressed most of the issues I wanted to get, get out here. But we have talked about the circulation at this intersection. We had a specific project. We've directed the pedestrian and bike committee to review a final plan there. Obviously, we want whatever's being done with this project to be incorporated into that. Brian, did you have some more comments you wanted to add?
I just wanted to follow up just on one of your comments regarding level of service and VMTs. I asked a question earlier and I think the response was that we're going to go with level of service. That's what's used by the city. But vehicle miles traveled will be collected and could be incorporated. I would suggest including both because I think there's people who are going to be very concerned about specific intersections. And I think there'll be people who are going to be concerned about the overall traffic generation. So that would be my suggestion.
And just to piggyback on, on the circulation question, I, I heard from many members of the public that they are concerned about the cumulative impact. I heard references to sewerage issues, water issues, the erosion issues in Seymour. And I think that these are illustrations writ large of a flaw that I have seen over the years in EIRs that I hope does not occur here. And that is to take a framework of analysis that is so small that we lose track of the broader impacts that it would have. If we have a development in the middle of downtown that's, say, bounded by three or four small streets and doesn't, and, and our scope of impact analysis includes only those streets and it doesn't include Kelly or Main Street or Highway One, but it generates traffic, the impacts will be minimal in that area because the traffic that wants to get to it is going to be stuck in the bottlenecks that are beyond the scope of analysis. And so my, I'm not suggesting that that's a trick. I'm just suggesting that when we, when we approach the analysis of these issues, let's honor the public's request to take a broad cumulative perspective. I also heard it with respect to context. I heard references to the nearby affordable housing, some of the local businesses whose economy would be affected by the decisions on this parcel, the people who use it for cycling or walking nearby. At the beginning of the conversation, maybe I came out too early with it, but I was concerned about the view shed in the context of other development nearby, the views with respect to the existing to the existing structures like the fire tower, but also understanding how they look against the hillside, how they look when you're across the street, or you're looking at the, the open space in that area. So, my, in some cases, I've seen analyses that had a tendency to be very, very narrow, even to the point of myopic. And I'm asking that in this study, we really think cumulatively about the impacts, because I think CEQA calls for us to do that. If we ignore it, we run the risk of being accused of, of segmenting, if not this project, our understanding of the development of the area. And I think we know what that intersection's going to look like, we know about some of the other development. I think it has crossed the threshold of what is reasonably foreseeable, and we don't have to wave our hands and shrug and say, "We don't know what's going to happen." We know a lot about what's going to happen, and we ought to use it in this study. I also wanted to just provide a, a comment as my, of my understanding to John, and maybe, maybe staff can help us, because he asked what our ability to address the process was. My understanding is that as we analyze this project, we're going to make conclusions about what, what the impacts of the project will be as we understand them, and whether or not those impacts are significant adverse impacts. And if we find them to be significant and adverse, we have the authority to add conditions to mitigate those impacts to where they're less than significant. Or if no significant, there's no way to mitigate those, we have the authority to turn down the project. So we actually have considerable authority with respect to what will happen. It's not everything, but, and maybe staff could help me if I've misstated our, our understanding, but that's my sort of 50,000-foot view, without meaning to sound muscular and threatening. I just want to communicate what I believe we're empowered to do. Thanks.
I, I think that's, that's pretty well stated. Going back to the, there's no foregone conclusion here. I have a couple of other comments I just wanted to add, and I'll be brief. I do agree that, taking on Mr. Ferran's comments, the outreach to the largely low-income Latino community in the adjoining neighborhood, I'd like to see that we communicate with the neighborhood in, in an appropriate manner. I know the city's done a great deal over the last two, three years in outreach to the Latino community, in particular, the low-income parts of the Latino community. I think that'd be really helpful, because they, that neighborhood will be impacted by the project. This is a visual resource, and we've had a few projects here in the last couple of years, in particular, the fire tower, that talk about the visual resource. So, one of the areas of consideration is the view of the ridgeline. So this has been a, the coastal commission didn't come down and give a, you know, very strong opinion, but we had a project that would have, the fire tower would have had obstructed a view of the ridgeline, and it's something that the city council ultimately overturned this planning commission's vote and made a small, shorter tower, worked with, forced the-
I wasn't here.
You weren't there? No, but that's most of this planning commission, many, a majority of the current planning commission. But the, my understanding is that the coastal commission shaded its opinion to the city, which was obstructing the ridgeline, that would be an impact on a visual resource. And so, if something happens there, it's going to be, need to be mitigated, and, and it might need to be mitigated, would, would be the concern. So, as we look at projects, you'll want to consider a way to approach the project that doesn't or minimizes the impact to the ridgeline, because that has, that's, to me, is, is something that is an area of concern as we look at this. Finally, this is a great opportunity, but the project's going to need work. I mean, it doesn't, it still has challenges fitting into the community. And the aesthetic, you know, that small-town feel that people like, the farm-town feel that John raised and spoke to, I agree with his comments. I mean, it's, it needs some work to fit in, and, and there's no real signature element that really ties it into the community, although the, the trees on the southern end of the property could be a good way of doing that. But, but it does need some help fitting in as a visual resource. It's, it's, it is the southern gateway to the city. So, those are all the comments I have.
I had one last thought, and that was, I really, again, I really appreciate the passion that came out tonight on both sides of this issue. I just want to appeal to those of you, whether you're for the project, or you're opposed to the project, or you have a revised view of the project, to spend some quality time with the applicant. He's made it clear that he likes to talk to people. He's one of the nicest guys you'll meet on the coast. And, you know, in processes that are political, they can be so divisive and so destructive. I am seeking comity, not comedy, but comity, in the way that we get through this process. I think that's one of the things that should define Half Moon Bay much more than it has sometimes in the past. So, I'm hopeful that, you know, while that doesn't mean we shouldn't be hard on the issues that we believe in, we should be soft on the people, because they're people.
With that, I think we're going to wrap up public comment. Is there anything else you wanted to add, or wrap up our hearing?
If you don't mind for a minute, we have a couple people left in the room would just like to note a few of the key next steps in a process like this. As you heard from our consultants, they'll be working on drafting the environmental impact report. That said, we're, we're going to have some opportunities for community engagement, and there's, there's two levels of that. Clearly, we heard tonight, we need to-
Folks, could you keep it down a little, please?
We need to do some work with our neighborhood and encourage them to come out, and in fact, instead of that, we'll, we'll go to them, and that's our experience with having really some, some excellent input from different areas of our Latino community, including Moon Ridge, as well as Main Street Place, which is near this site. Now, one thing I wanted to just mention to you that's upcoming, when the draft EIR comes out, they typically have a 45-day circulation period. During that time, a public hearing will be held before the planning commission. So it would look quite a bit like this, except the project plans and all the alternatives would be very fully developed. We'd normally have that meeting in the second half of the 45-day period. What I like to do, and I want to see what the planning commission thinks, but this is something we've done before, I like to have a meeting just for the community with staff. Planning commission can come without violating the Brown Act and take a peek at it, but in, it's a walk-through, the EIR, it's a tour of the EIR, and really show folks what's in there, how to find it, and how to make effective comments on it. And it's, I, I hope you will find this helpful. I intend to provide this with our project manager, but it's not about a bunch of consultants, it's not an applicant presentation, it's not a hearing, it's, let's figure out how this thing works. So, that's something that we'll be doing when it, when it's ready. And right now, we're looking at fall, but it, it could take longer. So, we just wanted to share that. Thanks.
I, I think that's a, a great idea, and if it follows the pattern of other outreach you've guys have done in the last two years, I think it'd be well received by the community.
Jill, if I could make a plea, I don't know how to do it any other way than that. If this is a project that I was doing, well, let me say this differently. If the next time we see this project, the plans are a lot more developed, it gets to the point where we either say, "Well, we just don't like it," I mean, it's very difficult, from the design review side. And so from a marketing point of view with clients, you always sort of have really simplistically thought through, but, you know, conceptual suggestions. It's, it's marketing. And I think our community deserves maybe some, like we did with the library, different suggestions of different styles and different looks of things that you might get feedback for. You know, if they're looking at a three-story block that looks like it's in Vacaville, is going to be one kind of feedback, but if there's other solutions that people could be looking at that aren't necessarily specific, specifically correct, and they're, they need to have adjustments, but it's a lot less work for the developer. If there's a way for us to have that process happen from the design review, which is, which I'm interpreting as visual impact, it would sure be, it seems like it would benefit everybody. And, and I can't tell people how to, what to do with their projects, and, you know, they haven't hired me to do it, so I'm not, you know, I can only critique what's in front of us. But it's sure a lot easier to have, you know, three or four different, "Oh, you know, we don't like that look, we like that look," you know, and, and the community seems to be an important part of this. So, I don't know how we can tweak the process to make that happen, but if we could, that would be, from my point of view.
Can I add a quick comment on that? Would it make sense to, if the applicant was in agreement, to separate the design review process from the, or, or is this such a, could we do the design review earlier rather than towards the end?
We can do it in parallel. We could, you are the design review body, and we can be bringing that forward to you. We have enough information to evaluate most of the project impacts, other than aesthetics, based on the overall envelope of the project, for the applicant's proposed programming, but not for the alternatives, and certainly, we don't, we don't have the architecture pinned down. So, we can do that. I, I don't want to go off the cuff here, so I need to spend some time designing a process with our applicant and looking at what that would be like. It's hard to do design review in the planning commission forum, so I apologize for just that challenge, so we'll, we'll think that through a bit.
You didn't abolish the design review committee, so it's not your fault.
I'd like one.
So it's a little off-topic, it's not noticed, but I wonder if we can put an item on to recreate the design review?
Let's talk about that later.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm asking for an-
We've covered that earlier, before you joined us. Okay, I think that's, that's really it for, for this hearing item, so we're going to close that. We have planning, actually, are there any staff comments you want to cover?
Haven't done them for a couple sessions. These will be brief. Your Form 700s are coming up. We learned a little bit about what we can do with minutes in the case we don't have quorum a couple times in a row. The city clerk has advised that staff can sign them off and we can file them. I've been concerned that they've been hanging out a little too long. I'm, thank you for cleaning them up tonight, we greatly appreciate that. I'm waiting to get a date from city clerk and city attorney, but right now, there is thinking that the ethics training would be offered to you in a joint session with city council, coming up in, not too far out. So as soon as I have that date, I'll, I'll fire off an email to you. Your agenda forecast, the April 10th meeting, we've already noticed, for the Zabala House, which is a conversion of lodging units to small apartments, and Myrtle, which is the project, I can't remember the address, it is that little house that you saw in study session, has been modified in design, and it's ready to come back to you already. I know I keep promising Jenna's coming back, we think it's coming back on the 24th, we shall see. Tomorrow, I'm, as your department, community development hearing, we're looking at demolition and replacement of a house on Spin Drift, and on April 11th, we have two administrative actions scheduled, which, one is an accessory dwelling unit on Spruce, and the other is a second-story deck on Filbert, and that gets us through the next few weeks.
Great, thank you, Jill. So, we have planning commissioner communications. I have a couple of communications. The, the subcommittee for the general plan, which is Commissioner Benjamin and myself, met with Jill Akis to go through the process we have here. We've got quite a bit of work to do, but we've got about three months of, looking at from a timing perspective, we've got two to three months' worth of meetings we're going to be going through, just mostly clarifying a few points, cleaning things up, but we should expect to have work product back to the commission as we clear hurdles. So we'll, we'll try to work as quickly as we can to get things back to this committee for a final draft review of, of everything we've discussed. Jimmy, I don't know if there's anything else you want to call out from that?
No, no, what she said.
I, I will mention to, we, we lost our city council member who was here, she just walked out, but because we are in subcommittee, we cannot talk to any of our fellow commissioners about the general plan process outside of any public meetings, because it would be a violation of the Brown Act. So, as a matter of course, you know, we just, we just want to make sure you guys are aware of that, and generally speaking, as much as I want to hang out with you and have a beer, Brian, I'm going to-
I was just going to say, "Thank you."
We're, we're going to try to, I'm, I'm personally just going to try to avoid any, any out-of-session meetings with fellow commissioners until we get through this process, because I'm concerned about even the appearance of a Brown Act violation, given what we're doing.
Does that mean we should be making our committee meetings over beer?
Wine is your choice, but beer, beer is, beer is always good. Definitely. Okay, so that's, that's all that we have from a, any other communications you guys want to share? Jill, has, I'll redirect back to the-
Apologize. Next week on April 5th, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee will be meeting, and they will have a presentation on Vision Zero, which we would encourage folks to come in and see. This is being put on by the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition.
That's not part of UN 2030, is it? All right, very good. On that note, I'm going to ask for a motion to end tonight's meeting?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for standing. So, I, so I appreciate the concerns you have about this. You know, I think a lot of us, you know, are looking at these open spaces in our community, there's kind of a vision that somehow they'll always stay that way, and almost all of them are quite far away. You know, are, are by the coastal, but they're still, they're still alive sometimes.
I just want to tell you-
Yeah, sure. No, no, please sit down.
My story is, um, a couple months ago, and there was some, you know, careful, to fight traffic, and I was getting shot, and I didn't know what it was.
So, genuine safety concerns.
Yeah, and so, we sent him home, he said, "Where's the, your home?" But it was a problem. Came home, and he's, all of a sudden, he's in the lips, he's, when I came back, he's in the box, he's totally embarrassed, couldn't speak, he was talking to him, he threw in the car, my question quickly is, I-